It's 4:30 so I'll call the meetings to order. I have an agenda change. Suzanne did not get the information back from the attorney for the contract. So she's asked us to postpone her visit until February and so I agreed to that. So we won't be discussing-
But can't we still talk about-
Yeah.
Bus parking. I'm-
I have questions about it.
I think it's fair to wait till Suzanne comes back. I just feel like with the budget on here, I was just thinking that, any further discussion?
Yeah, when it gets to it, I'm not gonna go into the whole thing but you and I chatted briefly before and I'm trying to get an understanding of that about the money.
Okay, so we'll just-
It'll be brief.
We won't change the agenda item, is that what the board would like?
Yeah, that's probably good because we also were asked last time to look at the contract and evaluate that.
Okay.
And I think we could do that today too.
Okay.
Okay?
There will be no agenda changes.
[laughing]
With that said, the Chair has no report this week. Does members have something? Yes, Jevanna?
I am getting my backup operation next week and I definitely will not be at the joint school committee meeting in January and I will not be at the next February.
Right.
It's the same sort of recovery that they're talking about, maybe four or five days in the hospital, a stint at the inpatient rehab. And it's really nebulous, I don't know when I'm coming back to the Cape. So just want to give the heads up that I'm not gonna be available for a while as a school committee person.
Okay.
That means the rest of us better show up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, also even in the best scenario, I'm told I can't drive for at least six weeks, I can't come back to work for two months, can't walk the dog for two to three months. So it's similar kind of recovery as before.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Jevanna.
Well, we wanted to work this time, should take time you need and we'll be here. Yeah, really.
Yeah, it sounded like you might escape it when you talked about it a few months ago and I thought maybe you'd be lucky and maybe-
Nope.
All right, well, thank you for that, letting us know. Any other members?
Yeah, the forum had a meeting on the Lawrence Road Affordable Housing Project. And right before I left, somebody was asking, will the people who live there be able to use the school? I didn't hear the answer to that and you were there, did you?
I said absolutely, but not during the day when the kids are there. I think that one of the things that we have talked about quite a lot actually is how much we'd like this to be a neighborhood school, a town community resource for all our people. And there's more to life than pickleball. So that's been going on for quite a while and I'm thrilled that people love it and now that our recreation director has her office here, that makes it more of a community center. And I think that people could expect to be able to come here and maybe work on the computers, do things in the evenings when the school is empty and-
What about Cory?
Well, so I say, not when the children are here. Not during the day.
It'll be coordinated with the rec department.
Sure.
Just as we have been planning.
Okay, all right.
You don't have to worry. I've got it all under control.
I can sleep better tonight.
Yeah, do. Okay.
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 All right, other citizens wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to our administrator reports.
Oh, that's me.
Mary Beth?
I just have one addition. I met last week with Michelle Insley, the SPAT executive director. And part of what we're doing in school council is trying to expand our community relationships and partnerships. And so we are going to partner with SPAT to continue, they currently fund our fourth and fifth grade trips to Audubon. And so we're going to expand that partnership by having a representative, it could be Michelle, it could be an oyster farmer, come in to do in-class presentations for grades four and five. Could be about SPAT as well as about oysters. And then they would in the springtime, depending on the tides, go out onto one of the farms and do a farm tour with an oysterman or oyster woman. So that was my addition to that.
That sounds fun.
Yeah.
The numbers look good.
We have a potential new student moving in as well, so it might be 108 next month.
In the grade?
One.
Ooh.
Super.
Comments or questions for Mary Beth? Okay, time.
Thank you very much, Betsy. So I've had probably six or eight meetings with Maxine Wincoff, who's heading up our strategic plan and looking at what our next moves will be. I'm particularly interested in how I can possibly put this in the hands of all of our parents in the entire district and a mailing of some nature and a glossy, professionally done, small booklet relative to this and maybe a little bit of other information about what's happening in our schools. So I'm actually gonna be seeking out some businesses who might be able to fund that for us and I'm excited for that. I'm participating when I can on the 21st Century work group and that's always exciting to think out that far. And we have a timetable. We're at the joint school committee meeting. We're gonna be asking the joint committee to approve of the format of this process. It's just a formality in nature but we have to bring it in front of the boards.
What do you mean by the format?
The format of how we're setting up this whole strategic plan and-
Just what the plan will look like.
Yeah, okay, I got it.
And so we'll be taking care of that. And I think this spring, at some point in the spring, we'll be in a position to bring some closure to the work of all the groups and move it forward. I anticipate, in working with the administrative team over the summer, there will be five tenants, I call them tenants, major points. And we will be taking one on each year. And I see that tied in with our school improvement plans, our evaluation system in the sense of suggesting coursework and even when people are looking to take courses, we want it related to some of the work of this plan.
Yes.
And so it has some, matter of fact, I'm not sure of this, but I'm not against the notion of going into buildings and asking people to define, tell me about one of the five. Because a system should know its strategic plan. It shouldn't be a mystery. So I'm really excited. I know committees worked very hard and they continue to work big hours on this to get this wrapped up for us.
And the subcommittees too.
Everything, yes, excellent.
Yeah.
Yeah. I wanted to share with you that all the budgets are in motion now and obviously some are a little bit more challenging than others. And we continue to chase something around the two and a half percent number. And you're in the lead right now and we're gonna be going into a vote today and they're one step behind the rest of the budgets. And we'll keep pushing them and having focus on those at the meetings coming forward. I think you might be aware, but you might have heard that moving forward, when we get back in with Brewster Elementary, they are working on a feasibility study of the configuration issue between the two schools with some money from the communities, as much as $85,000. And they have, at their last meeting, worked on their scope of work for this process because the town is doing the exact same thing with their senior citizen facility. And so we'll see both of those being put out onto the street by the town hall so that they're consistent and timely going together out. And so, for instance, you might hear there are tours being given in Brewster going forward of each of the elementary schools and the senior citizen facility for people to become familiar with those spaces and so forth. So for many of us, we've been watching the situation, for me, it's been 25 years because that's when I came here that they were talking about these two schools. And so we'll see where it goes from there. I do want to make you aware that the middle school, pleased to tell you that they received from Desi almost a $100,000 grant to expand their after-school programming and summer programming. And it's unique in the sense that realizing the situation of kids staying from three to six potentially, one, we have transportation needs and so we might be able to explore how we can expand these processes, this process in the future. But also they get snacks and things like this right after school and so we're pretty excited. And one of the focuses is on some of the work we've been doing with MIT for miniature drones and things like this. So that's very, very exciting as a C program going forward. Of course, and if you don't mind, you know, your brief discussion today about using the facilities here, I use West as an example of your after-school program, your partnership now with recreation in the building and trying to open up to more community groups. And it spurs on the conversation in some, a couple of the other towns that haven't got to that point. So it's, congratulations to you. Negotiations, we did have a joint meeting which was a first for us. Mort has been more than gracious to volunteer to be on this. He's done it before and he's a great member for us. And Mary Beth will come in because we're going to create two quicks, excuse me, subcommittees. One on updating the language from the evaluation process, which hasn't been updated for many, many years. And one will be on stipends, which if you've ever been around negotiations in general, everybody wants to get to the stipends but it's now May or June and, all right, so let's just give them the same color and we'll do it the next time. And that's probably been pushed around at least nine years, maybe 12 years. So we're gonna get a committee started right away on that. And our first meeting, and the union has tried to figure out how they're gonna move forward with all their bargaining units and it's very difficult because Mark and Anna are at all those negotiations. But eventually they decided they had to stay with the same format of all five going out versus breaking it up. So that's who we stand on that. And we're starting to feel some pretty strong pressure on the high school building project. We're probably 12 to 13 weeks from the first vote. And that's in the great town of Wellfleet who will be out first for us. But it continues and I know I've spoken to it many, many times because it's one of the biggest projects ever on the Cape. But it's also an unbelievably time-consuming piece for the superintendent. So at last Thursday's meeting, they announced that the MSBA is calling the superintendent, the business, assistant business director, the chairman of the board to Boston to talk over some space issues. So we're gonna get in a car tomorrow, Thursday morning at 5:45 and travel up and meet with our OPM over at Byfany Hall, he has an office there, and go over some strategies, walk Broad Street and try to get back in time to do the Orleans Forum on the project. So that is the process. And we're very close, I think I can tell you now, it's gonna be coming public. We have found a way to drop the budget almost $9 million. And we think we've kept the integrity of the program and the facility and a big piece of that was, had to do with additional architectural firms coming on the project and we decided not to do it that way. That was $6 million. And so we're gonna finish up with Orleans Forum. We're anticipating 80 to 90 people that afternoon, Thursday afternoon. And then the committee now, all 16 members, we're brainstorming every aspect of what are we doing now for the next 12 weeks. Remember, two weeks are vacations. So in between that. And so once we get that plan in place, we will get right at it. The only other thing I'd share with you is Keith has been charged to lead our formation of our political action committee. And that's because you're restricted a great deal with what you can do and say and where you can do it. And he's working now and he's, Mary Beth's been a big help. We're looking to create four teams in the four elementary districts and because the, believe it or not, the elementary teachers, parents are very excited to work on this for us and they see great value for what their kids are gonna get. And then we'll be talking about other initiatives that we can do legally, politically, signs, things like that. Working on a flyer that will go out to all residents, not to sway them but to give them the answers to 20 of the most critical questions of the project. So that's where we're at.
May I ask you, town, what is going to come to town meeting in April? What will it look like, the vote that you're going to be asking for?
So the first piece is that we're still working on the bonding issue. And the bonding issue is, the school committee is that we are going to bond this project. And each year the town gets a bill for its percentage of what it has to pay for the bond. But the issue coming forward will be to authorize that, and the number we'll use in the vote is that we authorize us to vote X amount of dollars for this project going forward. And we can't tell you, this is kind of a frustrating piece of this, we're talking 12 weeks, we won't know till mid-February when we go back to Boston for them to make the final decision on how much money they're going to give for this project. Interesting thing is that they have the money and they're gonna set that in place for us, aside for us. And we think it's gonna be around 40-ish million dollars that we're getting from MSBA towards this project. We think when it's all said and done, and I'm being very cautious, it'll be in the 90-ish million dollar range that the district will have to pay. Because we're scared to start throwing out numbers and they're not, they change and then people are saying, I thought you said-
That you said.
So we're, but it takes us all the way to mid-February before we know the exact number. So, and just so we're clear, we'll vote at town hall, at a town meeting like we usually do and more than likely, this is gonna have to go to a ballot issue in all four towns and it will take eight votes.
It's a borrowing, so it needs two-thirds vote, is that correct?
So for us, right now, it's gonna, it's gonna need a simple majority.
Oh.
Because we're going by mass law on this issue.
Because of what?
Because of mass law.
Oh, okay.
And so, but we're gonna need eight out of eight votes.
Yeah.
There's no, there's no three out of four on this one. And I'm comfortable with it, the board voted to do it that way. And so that's who we stand, so stay tuned.
Okay. Jivana, our FY '20 budget review?
Thank you. I have some updated expenditure reports for you. What we sent out, there's been some changes. We reclassified some expenses to other funds and we also had a change in a student and that is all reflected in here. So as I go through it, I will highlight the areas.
So is my minus more or less?
It's less.
Love it. Thank you.
So let's go directly to page eight of the report.
Ah, yes.
Thank you so much. It's been updated. Okay. The prior month balance was a negative $49,204. We have since put back into the budget $68,301, leaving a balance of $19,097. We still have a couple more reclassifications to be made for the FY tuition for the student coming from Eastham. And we also had some money, AMOC, to reclassify to building use. So that totals about $17,000. We haven't made those yet, those will be coming in the near future. But let's go through the report and highlight the items that add significant movement and then I will also highlight the items where we made some reclassifications of expenses.
But am I, understanding the 17,000 is minus?
The 17,000, it would, will be put back into the budget as the-
So more in the budget?
More and-
Thank you.
All right. We always like more. Okay, so let's start on page one of the report. Towards the bottom of the page, line item 401, for the salaries teachers. Here we have a positive variance and in this line item, we were able to unencumber $17,281 and that is due to a unpaid leave of absence. The teacher's out on medical leave and it's without pay, so that money goes back into the budget. We'll also see further down where we have the long-term sub in place for this teacher. So we'll continue. Any questions on that section of the report? Okay, so moving on to page two at the top, line item 4018, the substitutes long-term. This is what I made reference to. There are additional expenses that will have to be encumbered and that'll happen at next month's reporting. Because we didn't encumber through the, for the end of the absence and it's gonna be till the end of February, I believe. So that'll be an additional $3,100, that'll be put, encumbered for that leave. And then the next, there's another leave on the horizon and that, we'll have more information as that teacher goes out. Any questions on page two? Moving on to page five. Towards the top of the page, line item 4087, special needs preschool transportation. So in this line item, we were able to put back $19,061 of funds. So there's no variance here, there was a negative variance last month. So what happened here is we had prepaid in FY '19, $12,000 of transportation costs to cover the expenses of fiscal '20. We also reclassified to the tuition revenue account $17,767 of expenses. And also we had money that was given to us by Dr. Coretti from the IDA grant of $1,294 and those expenses will be classified to the grant. Okay? The next line item, 4035, the special needs out-of-district transportation. Here we were able to reclassify $11,502 of expenses. So those, we had additional money go back into the budget because they would be classified to the FY '19 tuition revenue account as well. Any questions on these two items on this page?
Yes. Is that 30,000 under actual, is that for one or two?
Two students.
Two.
Yes.
Both of them, okay, thank you.
So moving on to page six. Towards the top of the page, line item 4052, the supplies custodial, we just wanted to bring to your attention that we spent or encumbered $1,819 since last month's reporting. Moving on to page seven. Towards the bottom of the page, line item 4088, the special needs preschool tuition. Here we encumbered an additional $6,376. That is based on what was budgeted, but we hadn't encumbered enough in that line item. Okay. And then finally on page eight. Okay. Line item 4098, the special needs tuition collaborative. So here, we had a change in the student's educational plan. The student that is currently at the collaborative is leaving the collaborative to be homeschooled. So the adjustments in this line item reflect that change. Okay? So in this line item, we were able to put back into the budget $37,508. And of that amount, $9,500 was amount that we had prepaid in fiscal '19 and then $28,007 reflects that change in moving the student out of the collaborative into a homeschool placement.
Does anybody else wonder how that works and how we will support that effort with the homeschool?
Yes.
Somebody tell me that?
Yep. Dr. Coretti and I have met with the parent and it was at the parent's request. So the parent met with me first and of course I needed more guidance with Dr. Coretti. So we met with the parent last week and there are therapeutic services that cannot be provided within the collaborative setting or any school setting. So the parent is going to do homeschooling academics in the morning so that the needed therapies can happen in the afternoon. They're not happening currently due to the length of day. So this is something that the parents have decided must happen based on the recommendation from their doctors.
And who pays for the therapy? Is that a school obligation or-
Dr. Coretti is looking into that now and it looks like insurance will be covering it because it will be not only a recommendation from the doctors, but it will probably be a prescription written by the doctors.
Wow.
So that's still, I-
Something I-
We're meeting again next week.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Is there anything else to jump on?
Yes. This month, Arlen has notified the state that we will be applying for extraordinary relief. So I had Arlen do a calculation based upon the expenses last year and the expenses that we're gonna incur this year. We're looking at, if all goes well, about $38,000 of extraordinary relief that will go back into Mary Beth's budget.
I don't know what you're referring to.
Extraordinary-
I mean, what, extraordinary for what?
Hiring and special needs students. We get reinsurance-
Oh, I thought you changed the subject.
Oh, no. So that's 38,000, every number will go back in.
Any other questions?
I'm engaged.
Thanks, Jivana. All right, let's move on to our bus parking at West and the contract.
Well, the question I was asking-
Do you want us to go over the, for that first?
I just, and you and I talked before, I don't understand the part. I thought, correct me if I'm wrong, that the two school-bus companies that we've agreed, if we agree, are gonna pay us $5,000 and you say no.
So we are going into a partnership with the town, this is my understanding, in which they would like to park buses here, which the buses will pay for parking and we will be the recipients of the funding. So the very first thing that was discussed was two bus companies parking here. And they are very regular businesses. They already have things booked so we kind of know that that's happening. Additionally, Wellfleet sees 10% in other traffic, which is limousines, it's the same thing, people needing just a space for a larger vehicle. And so the town again came to us seeing, I mean, it was sort of revealed last time to us that under the same system, although they wouldn't, they're not regulars, so there wouldn't be a contract, but there would still be the supervision with the passes and those cars would be parked here as well with additional income to our school. As that was a little bit surprising to us, I think we had a discussion about that. And so we kind of left it just there and let's think about that because it was a little, we had not realized, and I think maybe it was just a little oversight, Suzanne didn't mention it, she just was kind of focusing on the big issues. So the other piece of it, which I feel like we could discuss tonight, is the contract that she left and to look over. Now, that same contract, I believe she took to the attorneys and that's why she didn't come tonight. So they were gonna kind of go over it. But we certainly could look at it and see what we had to say about that. And I do see Jan with her copy, so let's-
Wait, let me just finish the other part of it.
Yes.
The other, the other- The other, the other ten percent. They're, are we getting money from them too?
Yes. Yes.
They've agreed to that?
Well, the way it happens is that these larger, the two bigger bus companies have kind of like set things up in advance. There's some people who are like, oh, somebody just called me for a party. Oh, I need to park in Wellfleet. Oh, I'm going to call the town. And so we don't necessarily, it just happens in a different way. It's not like I've got these events planned because I'm a large company. So those people would still call the town, get a permit, be under the same rules as everybody else. But they're just not planned in advance. And so we have the opportunity to get some more, collect some more revenue. It's just that we don't, we can't say predict like, oh, it's going to be five thousand dollars because of the events. Is that making sense to everybody?
Well, except that. I've got a limousine service to bring people to to Wellfleet beaches. So I drive in and drop people off the beach. I come to the school and park. I haven't made any arrangement with the town.
I think vehicles that size, though, will get ticketed if they're not with a pass. And all the people who will park here will have tickets. So no matter where they've been parking before, and this is partly why I believe the town came to our meeting, to see if we would act as a partnership to help alleviate this problem they've been giving tickets out. And so is there a way that we could help them solve a problem where these big, large vehicles are parking all over the place? Could they park here? Could we just have a lot where either they would get a ticket or more likely with, you know, those tens of, you know, those companies, I think that they would call to say we're coming. Maybe they don't, but at any rate, there's a system, I think, in place with signage going up where people would be alerted like to that.
There will be signage.
There's, she, she said signage and passes that would change in color so that you couldn't just use the same pass every, you know, if you're one of those companies and, oh, somebody just called me. Every week's going to be a different color, so they can't just pay once and then sort of use it up. Is it making sense?
Yeah.
Anybody else have questions about that?
No, I think the only other concerns that were expressed, I think Mark expressed them. And I know I felt the same way. I don't know, I expressed it at the time. I was taken aback. And that is the, we weren't told about that when, you know, it almost feels like this was slipped in a back door to me that it was, we weren't told about this agreement to have this other ten percent come in. And I don't, I'm not clear, still not clear on what the oversight will be like. There will not be somebody here all day Saturday and all day Sunday that recreation staff will drive around randomly to check. And I'm just not feeling that comfortable. I'm not even sure why I'm not feeling that comfortable, but I just think about children playing in the field and the ballpark and, you know, and all of these big things parked with kids running after a ball between two buses. I, I'm not positive that it's a good idea completely. And I, I'm even more concerned, I guess those are the two issues that I have, the safety issue and also the the fact that we weren't told about it. It seems a little shaky.
Well, I, following up on that, when Suzanne was here, I said, will you be supervising? She said, no, we won't be. There, there, there's a part of the beach administration, there are people who drive around, but it's really.
So, I mean, I think we just need to think about, are we going into, you know, we, we, we're out there saying we want to partner with our community and they come to us with a problem that they'd like us to help solve. It benefits us. We did commit to a one-year pilot. I do think, as usual, those are great concerns and we certainly could ask Suzanne. But they'll be parked here. I don't necessarily think it's going to be this in and out traffic. I think they bring people. But again, we did agree, if we agree, we did, one of our stipulations is it's a one-year pilot to see. And whereas we do ask the town to help us in situations, I feel that it would go a long way for our committee to help them in a situation where, you know, we have asked them for a little bit more money to help us with some, you know, program enhancements that we need, we need to make to keep our program strong. And they have been willing partners to us. So I would like us to consider, even though there may be some concerns, we still have another meeting where Suzanne will come. But I'd, I'd like us to consider accepting the offer or or going into this partnership.
Jill, I'd like to weigh in since I'm not going to be here in February. And that is, I'm, I feel pretty consistent with the really good minutes we have from the last meeting.
Amen.
I, I raised the point about having a pilot and I'm glad you're emphasizing that, that this is a pilot. We're going to see how it works and tweak it or, you know, go forward. But as I said in the minutes, I'm definitely for the two companies that we have already somewhat engaged with. One defends a bit about the ten percent, just like it was put in the minutes. It says Jill asked what would happen if the space for the contracted buses is filled with the other ten percent. Jill suggested that they maintain a good relationship with the two companies they contract with and take baby steps moving forward. So right now, I once again feel definitely to sign the contract for the two big companies and take the baby steps. This is a pilot, maybe a following year to do the ten, the quote, ten percent. But it seems like there's so many issues that need to be worked out with the ten percent. Maybe I'd feel differently if and when there's a lot more information about that ten percent. But also to go on the concerns about safety and also the parking lot. I do believe that Suzanne had mentioned, since we're so close to the police station, that the police will also be part of the checks to see how it's going. And once again, since there is that signage, and I do believe that Suzanne said that there would be safety criteria, if you will, and protocol for at least the two buses, the two companies, that the drivers will be versed in this is a special place and, you know, whether it's, you know, whatever, but respect for the building and the grounds and all that, that there will be, from what I understand, a, an agreement that bus drivers will look at.
Okay, so I'm going to make a note for, at that February meeting for, just to revisit, to have Suzanne talk to us about that ten percent. I'll email her beforehand so that we can know the decision that we're making at that time, that we can make it as clear as we can about this ten percent. So that if we still agree that we want to just go with the pilot, certainly, but let's see if we can dig at it a little bit more. Okay? And so I'd like to move our conversation to the contract, just because we are going to talk about it again. I, I feel like we've heard from people, but just we do have an agenda with the budget hearing. So I just want to be cognizant of that. But so let's, any, any, something to add about the contract?
Yeah. Just essentially, Betsy, that this contract seemed really fine to me. And that pointed up exactly what the problem with the ten percent is. Because things like people not being allowed to come into the building or liability, the insurance that they have to have a million-dollar policy, how do we regulate things like that with the unknown? I think that this contract is, seems pretty reasonable to me for those two companies that we know about. But there are just so many loopholes.
Yes, so I think I'm just going to capture that because I think that really speaks to our concerns about the ten percent. They are not going to have a contract.
Exactly.
Right.
So we need to hear a little bit more about that and we will vote and.
I think it's pretty clear.
That's the crux of it.
So.
Yeah.
Okay, so we know the questions that we need to ask. And I can even just forward her an email just saying, this is what we're going to ask so that she can gather as much information before she comes. Sound good?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So now we go on to the approving the homelessness policy for a first read.
I thought, I thought it was a good policy. Well, hear that, Betsy?
Yeah.
It's an old, I mean, Joe.
It, it's an amazing, amazingly wide-reaching thing, especially when it gets to the winter rental thing, which I thought was a little bit extreme, but I guess not. You know, it would seem to me that it would not just, I mean, winter rental has a certain negativity attached to it. To me, it would be if it didn't last beyond the school year. There's nothing wrong with the winter rental that goes from September first to June thirtieth in the sense of the school. I mean, there might be other problems, but for the school, I don't see it being a problem. So I, I didn't know if that could be somehow reflected.
I circled that one too.
Yeah.
But the, the housing partnership is trying to find a way for those winter rentals to be year-round. So that might get.
And I'm going to have Ann speak for a minute.
So at the meeting, one of the members of the policy subcommittee put that in specifically because she is in that situation where she is in a winter rental and some of the winter rentals are only eight months.
Yeah.
And so then they have to get out and they don't have any place really to live. And then they can go back in September, but for that one month, do they go someplace to?
Are they in their car?
Yeah. But I mean, they're still going to the school if their child attended. They don't have to go someplace else. So that, that was actually put in there intentionally.
Yeah, I believe that. I just think that it should be maybe better defined, that's on.
I don't think it is defined in any way. I think it depends on the landlord.
What he does, yeah. So could, instead of winter rental, it be less than a school year rental?
Absolutely. I lived in one for a year.
No, but that's what I mean.
The language to be.
The language. Winter rental is ambiguous. Rental other than, or less than the school year is what we're trying to prevent or take care of or.
I, I think it's vague enough to cover what you're talking about. I mean, I like that it's vague. It's open to this, somebody, you know, to the situation Ann is talking about.
If student, homeless students are lacking a fixed, regular and adequate nighttime residence, it doesn't matter whether they're in school during the school year or during the summer. They're still lacking a fixed, regular and adequate.
Oh, of course. And life is tough, yes.
I think that's.
Okay.
Important.
And I just want to check in with Mary Beth. Did you have something that you?
No, I was just going to say what, because I, when I first moved to the Cape, I had to do winter rentals for two years. And it was mid-September and I had to be out by May fifteenth. So it doesn't span the whole school year and I was teaching.
I mean, I think what I hear Jan getting at is like, we're all very familiar with what winter rental can mean, but it's in, in a policy. So, but it is the choice of the board. Do we want to?
I moved, we vote for, what do you call it? This would be the first vote.
So this would be a first reading, pretty call it.
I vote to approve the policy.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Is that you two, Mark, Mark, are you voting?
Oh, yeah.
All right. Okay, and so now what we need to do is, I need a motion, a motion to move into the public hearing of our FY twenty-one budget.
A second. I'll make the motion that we do that.
And I'll second it.
All right. All in favor?
Did I write my notebook in? I don't have mine.
Yes.
Hi, Betsy, how are you? So, thank you for your discussion. Obviously, I do want to thank Mary Beth and Giovanna on, on the student situation. Hours of work has gone into understanding this. I believe Ann Coretti's office was working on this as well. And it's a sensitive situation, but I want to take care of our kids. What I have for you, it's, it's, and we just want to make sure you have everything that you ever need. We have revised the line budget with those changes that we talked about. And so that if you wanted to, this is the clean copy for you. I have a copy for each of you. And if you don't have your book here, you can take it home and put it back into the, I think it's tab four. And it'll, it'll get you right up to date. We got a couple here if you want to. The other piece of it is the narrative that goes along. Remember, we always have a narrative that goes with the budget. And so we have a copy for each of you on that.
Is it substantially different?
No.
No.
No. But, you know, we want your books to reflect the inaccurate number.
But those are the justifications for these numbers.
So we, you've got an updated line budget and you've got the justifications that go in sync with that. And this is a document, the last I have, just a one sheet page that summarizes the change. We use that in all the budgets when we make a change. So I'm going to give you a copy of this coming around.
Thank you.
Thank you, Martha.
And to lengthen my.
It's working.
The wrong needs of.
And I took the liberty to circle what the budget number is and the percent increase that we're talking about. And Mary Beth will now talk about, she's going to be presenting a piece on this overall budget. So, Mary Beth.
And so just to highlight, the percentage increase that was in the budget binder that you read last month in the presentation that I gave, that increase has not changed. It's still an increase of three point four seven percent. So my public hearing presentation is quite similar with just those changes in it. So I'll just read it and then I will pass it out to you so you have it. Okay? Wellfleet Elementary School believes that every child matters, is unique, deserves to feel safe and has the capacity to learn. West continues to strive for social, emotional and academic excellence for all learners. Our highly qualified educators utilize exceptional instructional practices and innovative programming. Our intensive special education classrooms provide an on-campus collaborative program, thus keeping students in their neighborhood elementary school. West has small class sizes and strong community involvement. Strong community school engagement improves learning outcomes for students. West's thriving community partnerships continues to expand with local organizations such as the Wellfleet Historical Society Museum, the Cape Cod Family Resource Center, SPAC, and the Chukwesit Yacht and Country Club. This fall, Wells, West welcomed the Wellfleet Recreation Department, offering them an on-campus office space. The Recreation Department will utilize the school in the evenings and on the weekends as a center of lifelong learning, thus making West a resource hub of the community. The FY twenty-one West draft budget comes in at a three point four seven percent increase. Staffing reductions are reflected in the draft, draft, excuse me, FY twenty-one budget. The librarian position has been reduced from forty percent to ten percent. The technology position has been reduced from eighty percent to sixty percent. The school guidance position has been reduced from one hundred percent to eighty percent. And the speech and language pathologist position has been reduced from one hundred percent to eighty percent. In FY twenty-one, West will no longer receive tuition in the amount of twenty-nine thousand one hundred forty. In FY21, West will no longer receive tuition in the amount of $29,143 from Eastham Elementary School. In addition, number one, circuit breaker funds from FY20 totaling $37,118 will be applied to prepay the FY21 special needs contracted OT and PT services. Two, circuit breaker funds for FY21 totaling $10,250 will be applied to prepay the FY21 special needs preschool tuition. Number three, $20,000 for four school choice students will be applied to contracted services non-instructional technology. And number four, $7,000 from the building use funds will be applied to contracted services building. The FY21 draft budget maintains all current academic programs, interventions, and the free after-school childcare program. The FY21 draft budget reflects level funding for many line items as well as reductions and increases in specific line items. And then there are two charts here for you to review relative to our budget reductions and our budget increases. The West's after-school childcare program has been a great resource for our working parents. Of the 10 new students who entered West in September, five are registered for ASK. To date, 39 students, or 30%, 36% of our student population are enrolled in the program with up to 31 students attending daily. It is our goal to continue this free of charge program for FY21. In FY21, we have increased the ASK budget by only $1,533 totaling $43,503. The increase reflects a 2.5% increase in the three staff salaries and a $500 increase in materials and supplies. To close, the regular day portion of the West FY21 draft budget increases by $30,516 or 1.57%. And the special education portion of the budget increases by $63,106 or 8.43%. The total increase from FY20 to FY21 is $93,622 or 3.47%. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I do have a copy of this presentation. I don't know what I did, but it stapled it like a little booklet. So, I apologize for that.
We'll take it. Betsy, can I ask, please, about the choice student? We had two this year that we had in first grade. And we haven't really talked about how that's worked out. And I was guessing from the fact that you have put four into the next budget, that we like it.
We love it. We love it, and we're anticipating 16 students coming into K, so we could certainly add there. I prefer school choice kids coming in as early as possible so that they get the most out of our programming. However, our current second grade has 14 kiddos, so that would be going into third grade. And so, I'm comfortable if we wanted to add a student or students there.
Wonderful.
Yeah. But it's worked out beautifully.
It has.
Wonderful addition.
Great. What were we waiting for all those years?
Well, we had, we had concerns.
Yeah.
We were concerned.
Great.
Thank you. And just to highlight also, it is above 2.5%. Last year, we came in right at the 2.5% increase. The prior year, we came in at a negative 0.79%. So, I feel very comfortable with this final number and that percentage increase.
Right.
Well, clearly, it's such a big percentage increase with special needs, and that's a mandated.
Correct.
Gotta do it.
I can't, I don't foresee any objection in the town.
I can't, it's just, everything is running so beautifully.
Yeah.
I am sorry, I have to say. I know we have a wonderful public library, but I am sorry that when I first came on this board, there was a full-time librarian who really enriched the lives of all of the students. And that has been whittled away, and now you're talking 10%.
Correct. And I know that's heartbreaking.
It is heartbreaking to me. I think that, you know, it's.
Can you tell us how you're thinking about that?
Sure.
And like, how the program will maintain its.
So, the past two or three years, there have been content area minutes that have been required of all the elementary schools. And out of that came the library to be 25 minutes per week for all grade levels. I maintained it over the past few years at 50%. So, I have to be in line with what the other elementary schools are doing in the district. So, this is the sheet for next year, which is pretty much what it is this year relative to content area minutes for all of the subject areas.
Would you consider using retired volunteers in the library?
Yes.
After the strategic plan.
Yes.
Right, yes.
So, there are two, there are two areas across the entire district that there is consideration of, and it's, it is the librarian's position and tech integration. Those are the two areas that there's a focus on in terms of, what are we doing with that going forward? And I, I'll take it one step further that, as you're well aware, 'cause you're all veteran board members, at some point, we've had tech coordinators, we've had tech integration people, we've had tech teachers, and we're looking at that whole media centerpiece of how does that all blend together? And I, I'm encouraged to think that our kids are reading as much as ever. They're just reading differently in terms of the hard copy books all the time. And I can tell you that the expectations, for instance, at the high school are no different in terms of their expertise with reading and so forth, except they read on devices and things like that. And I'm not advocating for that, I'm not, I'm not at all, but I'm just telling you, technology is having a huge change on, on all of our schools and our, in our communities and our, in our, in our lives. And no one is trying to jump ahead of it by any means, but these are some facts that are being discussed district-wide, not just.
Gee, and I share with you the loss, if you will, of that special line item we had
the time. Part of it also was the individual who had that position, which was very special. She really integrated a lot of multiple intelligences, making quilts. I mean, it, the particular individual was absolutely stellar. And, you know, I speak to that loss of the person who went into retirement as well.
I have another question. We had hoped, and maybe it's too early to tell, Tom, but we had hoped that the propane buses were going to save us money in the new system with the collaborative and stuff. Do we have, I noticed there's no change really in the transportation budget.
Yeah, so, I mean, the, we always knew, I mean, first of all, as I have quoted many times, we've saved money because our prices aren't rising anywhere near where they were at one time. Remember, we came out of a contract that was up 41% in three years. And the interesting piece in the, when you dig into the lease agreement that we have with the collaborative, is we know that the life expectancy of these buses is 12 to 14 years. And we know, I believe it's either six or seven, I think it's seven. We have fully paid off our lease and, and the hundreds of thousands of dollars that we're investing into these buses for a few years will be a bonus for all the district schools. And so, it's, it's still a situation where we're neutral in terms of those rising costs.
Which means we're ahead.
That's right, exactly right.
Is that reflected in some of this information so that people?
Let me give you another example. We're watching healthcare benefit costs at the region-only budget because that's a big issue for us. And we're having a lot of discussion with Sue Wall, and she sits on that board. Last year, it was zero, as you remember, on the cost of increase of health insurance. If it comes in at zero, we're just level.
Oh, sure.
We don't gain anything from that at this point. The big gain was in the first year of it, when it dropped dramatically down. And so, the transportation has worked very well for us, and we're very pleased with it. I can tell you that I'm pleased to hear that the collaborative is putting a freeze on bringing in more towns into the bus program because drivers are hard to find.
Can't get the drivers, right.
It is, I just talked to my sister-in-law, he's got some time in the winter, trying to convince her that the bonus is well worth it if we go ahead and get her license.
She comes and drives.
And at least she's, she says she's considering it, but I don't know. So, thank you, Jan.
Yeah, okay.
Anything else, Jan?
Yeah, I got a couple of little things to fix. Just mistakes, typos, which.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, not typos, but mistakes that just were overlooked. Library, it still says 40%. It should say 10% here. And.
I think that was, those were all submitted prior to final numbers.
Right, but I think you wanna fix it before you give it to the selectmen. And I think the psychologist is still at 100.
I'm sure.
It should get down to 80.
In the same of speech.
You know, just to fix these things. And also, I was absolutely delighted to see Paul was still staying on. I thought he was gonna retire.
We did, too.
And, you know, here he is again. And I think that means a lot 'cause he relates so well to the kids, you know, so that's a really.
Thank you for finding those two.
Good thing, yeah.
And just so that you know also, with the, the school site and our speech and language pathologist, those were requested to not work full-time. And so, I was able to honor that, looking at our enrollment, our population of kids, the needs that are there, and it will not impact service delivery.
Okay, good. And just one more comment, which I think gets lost in the shuffle a lot. We actually, our student population is up by 16 children. And I think people don't think about that because we've lost the preschool to Eastham, and we used to count their numbers in. So, now that we're, we don't have those children here anymore, we still have 107 children in K through 5 rather than preschool through 5. And I think, you know, that's really good. We're, you know, we went way down that year that we had such a tiny class. But now, we're really coming up, and I think we should note that.
Thank you.
We have more students.
And share that with the boards as we.
Yes, you know, right?
Yeah, for a small school, it's a big percentage.
Big percentage, yeah. That it is, 16 kids is a lot of kids, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Of course. Anyone else? Mary Beth, just thank you for making everything so clear and.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
It's just wonderful. I think this is definitely something we can stand behind. So, with that said, do I have a motion?
So, we should read the number of the budget.
This one.
You got it, yeah. Help me, Jan.
Nope, no. I, I think we just want.
So, I read version.
When I make the motion, I think I can include that. And then when you call for the vote, you have to repeat it, I think.
Okay, so you're gonna make the motion for us? Go.
I move that we accept and endorse the budget for 2021, not 20, right? For $2,791,204, which is an increase of $93,622 over fiscal year 2020, and is, represents a 3.47% increase.
Do we have a second?
I second the motion.
So, all in favor of a total updated budget, version two, for FY21 in the amount of $2,791,204? Did I read that right? Math coach. An increase of 93, 93,622, and a total percent increase of 3.47%. All in favor? Okay.
Excellent.
We did it.
And we'll vote to come out of the public hearing. Motion to come out.
All right, so now, do I have a motion to come out of public hearing?
Some.
And, second, and, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Here you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cheers all around.
Yeah. All right, to reports and information, and Jill, Cape Cod Collaborative?
Yes, there was a meeting last Wednesday, and as Tom mentioned, the collaborative, one of the biggest time-consuming jobs and responsibilities is transportation these days. And of course, that was a big piece of discussion. And just to update people, you know, Mashpee has buses through the collaborative, Nauset Region does, Bourne Public Schools does, and it appears that there's going to be a feasibility study because of parking issues for Bourne. They might have to actually build a parking lot because there's not enough room for the buses. Monamoy has buses, and Martha's Vineyard has buses, and more school systems have buses, but these are the ones that are taking up some time right now for reviewing. And it's ongoing, the issues of not having enough drivers. There's a subcommittee that's looking into how can the collaborative entice more drivers. Okay, special projects. The All Cape in Service is already being looked at and planned for for this coming November The date has been set, it will be on Election Day, the professional development of All Cape in Service. Excuse me, of course, just like we do here, you know, budget is always a big thing, is looking at the budget and what are the needs, and looking at spending reports. And if anybody is interested, I have the annual 2018 to 2019 Annual Report of Collaborative, if anybody wants to take it home? Okay.
They'll send you one, Betsy.
Well, the good news is, you know, the collaborative is doing really well with budgets and spending.
Good.
It's a more fluid budget because things change quickly, you know, with students in, students out. They recently had an audit, and the outcome of the audit was doing a good job, basically. Very exciting, Bridgewater State College and the collaborative are working together on having various programs and licensures for needs in this area on the Cape. So, in other words, right now, there are, there is a program being developed for people who have bachelor's degrees that are seeking special education teacher licensure. And at the moment, there's at least 19 attendees, people that are quite interested in this happening. And it's a very big cost savings. So, since it's a regional collaborative effort of satisfying a need in this region, it's significant, the money that it saves for the participants and the school systems. The curriculum administrators are working towards a course for themselves, a leadership course. And this actually is a Massachusetts requirement. So, once again, just creative problem solving and regional resources and the collaborative working together to coordinate and organize something that would be quite useful for staff and school systems here. Oh, yes. Oh, yes. Every year, there's this wonderful legislative breakfast. And it's going to, it's been bumped up significantly earlier this year, and I'm so frustrated, I can't go this year. But I just got the date last week. Members of the committee can go, you just need to call the collaborative and say you're going. It hasn't been worked out the exact time, but the date is Friday, January thirty-first. And there's always been a wonderful showing of senators and legislators, representatives. And it's very exciting, too, because there seems to be really great bipartisan coordination on the Cape, especially for educational issues. So, it's a good forum to, for legislators to hear about our most pressing needs and problems, and also their input as far as what they can do. And one thing after return, returning, attending these for year after year, it, whether one is able to go to the legislative breakfast or not, the legislators on the Cape, especially Senator Peak and Representative Seer, or wait a minute.
The other way around.
The other way around. This is not my best time of day. But our legislators in this area are so motivated. They really want to help us, but what helps them is being super clear and concise and short about what is they can do to help us, because they have just so many other things in their orbit. So, once again, it just seems to be highlighted year after year. Like, tell us, speak to us, but keep it short, concise, and what is it? What are your needs? Okay, so, if you are interested in going to the collaborative legislative breakfast, right now, it looks like the time will be ten o'clock, but that could change. The breakfast is being coordinated with other events that the legislators are going to be going to. But here's the phone number for the people here who might want to attend. It's five zero eight, four two zero, six nine, five zero. And just identify yourself as on the Wellfleet School Committee and you'd like to attend. If, if I get any information about exactly when it's going to be, I'll let you know. But I am going to be out of communication beginning Tuesday. Thank you. I do believe this is... There's more, lots more, but those are the highlights. Okay.
Hey, thank you.
You're welcome.
Preschool enrollment, anything that anybody wanted to...
No.
...listen in here? Okay, moving right along. PTA did not meet, we are meeting on February eleventh, is that correct? Yes. Strategic Plan Subcommittee, is that you, Martha?
Tom took a lot of my report.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't remember.
I always do that.
We're, we're pretty excited. The working groups have all four, well, four out of the five working groups are actually ready to start talking about the technology links in each of the committees. And I think the only, the only working group that has not yet completed the initiatives is Twenty-Fourth Century Skill. We won't mention names. Maxine is doing an amazing job. I am so happy to have the chance to get to know her. And she keeps running out of meeting time, so groups of us have been meeting at odd times, like nine in the morning in her dining room. We had a strategic planning steering committee meeting last night at five-thirty in central office. I think we were almost the last ones to leave. I think you left after we did, yeah.
You were gonna have one in your house, too, I thought. No?
No, that, that was the man coming to hook up our stove.
Community member, maybe? Strike that for the minutes.
That isn't what I was referring to.
Oh, okay. We'll talk later. The, the other thing I wanted to say about the strategic plan is that we're hoping that all of the groups' work will be done by the beginning of February. And some of the groups have worked pretty fast to get the initiatives going. We will be presenting, as, as Tom said, we'll be presenting the format at our joint meeting on the twenty-third. And it's, it's looking very exciting. The whole thing has been exciting. I just don't know how we're gonna fund it, but we will.
If you have the right ideas, you can sometimes find a way.
Right, right, exactly. So, anyway, that's, that's pretty much, I don't think there's anything else. We're talking about creating a briefer version of the strategic plan that would in fact go out to families. We will have it on the website, so people will, everybody will have a chance to look at it. Anybody in the community can just go to the website and, and read it. And that's all I have to say about that. I think there's nothing else that I'm forgetting.
Thank you.
We're hoping to be finished sometime in February, and definitely by the very beginning of March.
Substance Abuse Task Force? Substance Abuse Task Force?
The Mental Health Substance Abuse Task Force met on January eighth, on a Wednesday, because strategic planning took all of the Mondays. And the, what, it was a really good meeting this time. The high school principal and the middle school principal came and talked about programs that are in place right now at the high school and middle school, and where they're going in terms of social-emotional learning. And one of the biggest problems that they are trying to work out is how to schedule things when they're talking about time on learning to get all of the standards met academically. How can they make time for the advisory program and how could, at the high school level? And how can they make time for the kinds of programs like creative outlets that they're now doing in the middle school? I was very, very excited. I think both new principals are, have good visions, good forward-looking visions. It's well done on the hiring, really good.
White police.
Yeah. One of the things that they were talking about is restorative practices, which is a different way of looking at managing students' behavior. It's a much more humanistic way, less punishing and more talking, so that kids actually learn how to negotiate, how to compromise, and they're getting all of those skills instead of being, you know, sent to the principal or having time out or, or that kind of thing. The other thing that the high school and middle school are looking at very carefully, and we are too on the committee, is how to bridge a, a readmission to school after kids have been hospitalized for physical or behavioral health issues. And so, Dr. Coretti's been looking at a few programs, and I believe that the principal at the high school has been as well. And I think that's it.
Okay.
We're marching on.
Okay, so the policy subcommittee met, and we discussed what we voted on today. And we also are, continue to work on the fundraising policy. So, with so much money coming in, it's time for us to pay attention a little bit closer and kind of create a more district vision, because there's a lot of money that comes in. And so, we have, will continue to work, I think we have a meeting coming up, I don't know, within a week or so. And we'll be bringing that forward at that time. Okay.
When you say a lot of money, do you give us any idea of the amount, the figures?
Ah, well, I know Tom knows big numbers.
So, I can tell you, at the high school, it's hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Being raised by...
Each of you.
Groups?
When you take a prom, for instance, Mort, and, and you're trying to offset costs for that, and dinners, and then a senior, they have a senior banquet, you're talking, you know, you got two, you got two, you got two hundred-plus students, two hundred and fifty kids in the class. It's serious, and it, it's, it's, it's a problem that every district's facing, and we're trying to rein it in and understand it, and...
Why is it a problem?
Well, because, because, just take cash. Let's take the Homecoming Dance, and we got two advisors, but they're at lunch duty with, with high school kids who are collecting twenty-five dollars a pop. Okay, thank you, Mort.
Say no more. Wellness Subcommittee, Jean, uh, Mary Beth?
I don't think they met.
Okay. Okay, and then, future agenda items?
The, the contract with the buses.
So, that, that's definitely gonna go on in February. Anything else? Okay, approval of the minutes then?
I would like to compliment the minutes. I think they were really extraordinary, and it was very helpful. It's amazing how much you can forget in the month.
I should see the scribbling she does. I don't know if she makes sense of that.
Now, I do have a question about it. The capital budget, we voted unanimously, but I had raised serious questions about one of the items. Does that mean no, no more, that that's it?
No.
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 We can put that, that would be a good, I think, a, a gender item.
Okay.
Yeah.
Capital budget?
Well, that, the playground.
Playground.
Playground, yeah.
That's on my list.
Okay.
Yeah, that stayed on my list. I think we were gonna move there.
Okay.
Yeah, but I will write it again, thank you.
And I just have a change to the minutes. Under Principal's report, it's intergenerational book club, not international book club.
We'd like it to be international.
That was the case.
I'd join.
And I have just a couple of little corrections. On page two, in the last paragraph, the fourth line, they suggested that they remind people of the wonderful school, not wonder school. I mean, we are a wonder school, but wonderful school and programs under budget book distribution. Oh, that's the third page, I'm sorry. It's the third page on the budget book. It said wonder. It should be wonderful. And then, a few more lines down. I think it should read, "Members talked about the reduction of the library time to ten percent." For some reason, I didn't think the ten percent reduction. It's not a ten percent reduction, it's a reduction to ten percent, okay?
Well, you see, they're reading the book wonder.
Yes.
I know.
That's how wonderful God...
Oh, that's how wonderful.
Wonder God there, yeah.
All right, so have we approved the minute?
So, I've been wondering how it got in there.
So, we have a motion to approve as amended?
Yes, I knew that we approved these as amended.
Second.
Second.
Favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Great, I will pay bills later when I get home, I promise. And do we have a motion for adjournment?
Yeah, it's your job.
Oh, there being no further business?
I second.
You know, what would you do?